Good morning, everybody. At 10:01, we'll call to order our Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, January 18th. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, we will accept any public comments for items not appearing on our agenda today. Is there any public comment at this time?
Yes.
Please? Okay, yeah, please. If you would be willing to...
One moment.
Oh, sure, absolutely, sure. And we would ask you just if you're willing to state your name and municipality in which you live in.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And we can give you a 30-second countdown, if that's okay, for five minutes.
My name is Gregory Rogers, previous Penn State graduate. I am here from the municipality of State College, Pennsylvania, in which I run and own my own business, one of the few black businesses in the area. Additionally, I also started an organization entitled Race Free. It's basically for equality of justice for minorities, children, and women in this particular county and the rest of Pennsylvania. I'm here this morning to basically start the initiative of my organization and start an initiative that is long due at this point in time. I'm only going to be here very briefly, and I'd like you to table the particular things that I'm speaking of as far as, excuse me, the initiative for equality of justice. One of the things that I believe have not been spoken on and should start to lead our diverse actions here in this county would be, I noticed, there's very limited people of color, even in the maintenance sectors, in your government employment positions. And I'm not talking about district attorneys. I'm talking about maintenance men that do the regular maintenance. I haven't seen no one of color. You do have limited color in regards to, and women, limited as well. May I speak on that as well? Very limited women. I noticed that there also is very limited women in your presence of government and minorities in your presence of government. I do recall one district magistrate, I believe he's of Asian descent, but that is about it. At this time, I would like certain steps with the applications that you field with the information and how you describe the jobs to invite diverse people from all colors and backgrounds. If you don't realize, Penn State University is right in our backyard. A lot of people stay here because they like the area, like I have stayed and actually came back. I also run a business. It's called Marble Finisher Modeling. I have a lot of old aging clients that own several properties in this area. Some are females. I represent them, okay? Some are minorities, prominent minorities. I represent them, even with PhDs. They asked me to come and speak today to start some of this diverse initiative. Additionally, and last to speak, certain things have occurred recently in my personal life that have thrust me into this position to start to seek these meetings and start to make some change. Personally, I was harassed by the Spring Township Police. I won't disclose the information, nor will I disclose the officers in particular. However, my lawyers will take care of that, and you will get more further explanation. With that said, my name is Gregory Rogers. Thank you all for your time. And at this point, I'd ask that you start to place an object of subject nature here of a diverse section in your county on your agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rogers, very much for your time. If you would be willing to, either if you have a card or just...
Absolutely.
We would love to have your contact information so we can stay in touch and just to get to know each other a little bit more and continue this dialogue. I really, I, yeah, I'll say, we really appreciate you coming today and making your voice heard, and let's continue a conversation on this, okay? Thank you. Okay. All right. And just to let you know, one of the things that, well, we can get to that just in a second, yeah. We'll talk offline more. Okay. All right. At this time, we will look for any additions to the agenda at this time.
I've heard.
Okay. And what we'll do, Mr. Rogers, I do appreciate the fact that you would like something on today, but we'll, we can at a future time potentially consider it, but I don't think we're going to be doing it today, okay? Just to let you know. Sure. Absolutely, absolutely. Okay. All right. We'll look for a motion to approve our minutes from January 11th, which is our last meeting of the Board of Commissioners.
Motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Commissioners meeting.
All right. They've moved and seconded. Any final discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. At this time, we are going to jump into proclamation number one of 2022. We're going to welcome up Hope Rotten, the Executive Director of the Red Cross Greater Pennsylvania, which is an ever-increasing footprint. And Hope, we planned this a little bit right before a really huge announcement from the National Red Cross about blood donation. So, we appreciate you being here. We want to get the word out about the dire need. So, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Good morning. Thank you to the Commissioners for recognizing January as National Blood Donor Month. Observed since 1970, this is a time to celebrate and honor those who roll up their sleeve to help patients in need. Thank you to the incredibly generous Center County donors, who last fiscal year donated over 7,100 units of blood. In addition to applauding the contributions of blood donors, the goal of National Blood Donor Month is to increase blood and platelet donations during the winter, which is one of the most difficult times of the year to collect enough blood products. This year, raising awareness for blood donations is even more important because just last week, the American Red Cross declared its first-ever national blood crisis. This is the worst shortage in over a decade, and it is posing a risk to patient care. Doctors have been forced to make difficult decisions about who receives transfusions and who will need to wait until more products become available. The Red Cross has experienced about a 10% decline in the number of people donating during the pandemic. In recent weeks, the Red Cross has had less than a one-day supply of critical blood products, which is well below the ideal five-day supply. The Red Cross is working with hospitals around the clock to meet the need of patients, but blood product distributions to hospitals are outpacing the number of donations coming in. To help meet the need this January, our local chapter has launched a sleeves-up virtual blood drive. Getting involved is simple. You can visit our campaign page, pledge to donate, and make an appointment at any Red Cross blood drive near you. One donation can save up to three lives, so in honor of our founder Clara Barton's 200th birthday, our goal is to touch 200 lives through the gift of life-saving blood. This means we need 67 donors to pledge their support. As of this morning, we are at 45, and our campaign will be running until the end of the month. You can find information for the campaign by visiting our Facebook page, @RedCrossGPA. I encourage those who can to please make an appointment to donate blood. I'm going to show a few pictures here. The health and safety of everyone attending Red Cross blood drives is a priority. We continue to practice social distancing, masking, and extra sanitation. The need for blood is constant, so we ask that people continue to donate in the weeks and months ahead. In addition to our local campaign, you can also visit redcrossblood.org to make an appointment to donate. And if it's okay, we do have a short video with blood recipient stories to go ahead and share, so I will get that started.
I might want to put that microphone up to the, to your speaker.
Yeah, it's coming up.
On the video, Hope, the YouTube itself.
That volume all the way up to do this? Okay, all right.
In May, I had a fairly routine surgery performed, and afterward, I was in the hospital and had a routine and emergency surgery. Prior to the transfusion, my doctor had trained the surgery to try to, blah, 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 and I was successful, and I needed two minutes of rest. And even though I had a pretty common blood type, it took two hours to source the blood I needed, and I needed an extra day and a half to recover my surgery. Hi, my name is Bridgette Darby, and I'm a volunteer with the Central Pennsylvania Chapter of the Red Cross. I worked at Penn State University, I think Penn State University, and I'm happily in our rescue and down walk. And about two years ago, almost two years now, I went into the emergency room to address some health concerns and health issues that I was having, and I found out that I was going to have to be admitted, and I was in need of a blood transfusion. You never know what a difference a day can make. I didn't ever think that I would need a blood transfusion when I went to the hospital that day, and I definitely never thought that I would need multiple blood transfusions. And you just assume, when you hear about blood and blood transfusions or people leaving blood, that it's going to be there, and it may not always be the case. When I think about the availability of my body and the patients need after surgery, chopper, acting, of the treatment, of the liver, suffering from different diseases that impact their blood levels, the shortage that was there in my house was very scary. And I hadn't been able to access the blood I needed during my surgery. What would happen is it's scary. When you think about how your day, your life can change in an instant, you hope that there is a supply that can allow you to see the next day, to come home to your family, to your pets, to your job. And if it's work for the supply that is built up through generous donations by people in the down times, we won't have blood when we need it, whether it's for an emergency disaster, a car accident, or something as simple as, I'm not feeling well, and you go to the doctors, and then finding out that you need a blood transfusion to save your life. I think there was across the country, patients have need, need the blood. Even the little thing that I ever really did was survive to the, I was facing a blood pressure. I'm encouraged to give blood whenever I can. I use the Red Cross Blood Act and found that my last blood donation had been to a children's hospital and I just didn't know what I was going to do. We literally have the opportunity to save others running through our veins, and it's a tremendous power, a tremendous gift to be able to be a hero.
All right. Thank you very much for your time and for allowing me to share the message of blood donations. I greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely. Hope, this is a dire time to give, and so let's all give and let's all make ourselves available for that. So, we would look then for a motion to proclaim January 2022 as National Blood Donor Month.
Motion to adopt proclamation number one, proclaiming January of 2022 as National Blood Donor Month in Center County.
Let me second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. All right, so we'd like to present this to you, Hope, if you want to be joined up here. John, do you have your phone? You might take a picture of us. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Hope, it's great to see you.
Good to see you, too.
There you go, yeah. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Thanks, John, very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it so much. Thank you, Kate, there. Give it the great work.
Indeed. As I like to say, when other people, it's like one of those things you hope you never need.
I know, absolutely, absolutely. I think the interesting thing was that, I guess in the app, Hope, it shows you where your blood goes.
He does.
That's pretty, that's like...
That's nice.
To connect the need there, that's pretty remarkable. That's great. Okay. Okay. All right. Next on our agenda, we're going to turn it over to Margaret. Good morning, Margaret.
Good morning. I'm requesting approval to advertise a request for proposal for services to provide of printing and mail population services for the general primary election in May of 2022. Just around the corner, we need to get this out there. We're looking at about 105,000 ballots for printing, and so we're testing the market to see who might be available to provide these services to us.
Thank you, Margaret. Any comments or questions on this RFP?
The numbers together?
Absolutely.
We have a streamlined process for...
Absolutely. Okay. We will look then for a motion to approve the advertisement.
Motion to approve the advertisement of the Request for Proposal Election Printing and Mail Services.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. All right, and then we have one contract as well.
Yes, this pertains to solicitation for a bond council to serve Center County government. As you know, we ask Public Financial Management, PFM, to solicit proposals for bond council services. And in the request for these services, the services to be provided included identifying public finance attorneys who have participated in a transaction. Each applicant was to provide references, examples of other Pennsylvania counties that they've experienced, their experience with as bond counsel. They were to disclose any conflicts of interest that they might have, and they were to provide a fee quote. The RFP was distributed on December 23rd, and responses were due on January 7th, 2022, and the county received proposals from five different firms. While PFM has reviewed all of these applications, and they feel that any one of them could provide the requested services to Center County, the recommendation to the board is for you to consider moving forward with a proposal submitted by Eckert Siemens based on five reasons. One, close geographic proximity to the county with our offices in Harrisburg. Second, extensive experience in serving as bond counsel to other Pennsylvania counties and local governments. A fee proposal on the lower end of the spectrum of proposals received commensurate with other fee levels for similar engagements with Pennsylvania local governments. Past experience in service as bond counsel to Center County with significant institutional knowledge of and familiarity with Center County. And the last item is a flexible approach to certain tax matters that may be relevant to us as we look at different financing options. So, the recommendation is to approve moving into contract negotiations with Eckert Siemens.
Thank you very much, Margaret. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions?
We've had a great relationship with Eckert Siemens over the years, and quite frankly, they've bailed us out of a few situations with maybe other folks would have missed. So, you know, Joe Pierce, who worked with them for years, was a great asset, but I would say that that would be a prudent move to stay with Eckert Siemens.
Yeah, they're well-known in all the counties throughout the Commonwealth.
It would be great to continue our partnership with Eckert Siemens with this, and so, yeah, I think we're all in favor, so we'll look for a motion then to enter into contract negotiations.
Motion to approve entering into contact, sorry, contract negotiations with Eckert Siemens.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you very much, Margaret. Thank you. Okay. We're going to welcome up Diana at this time, going to talk about our ag land preservation program. Good morning.
Good morning. On behalf of the Agricultural Land Preservation Board, I'm here to ask the Commissioners to certify our 2022 funds for agricultural conservation easements. This year will be a total of $112,661. This total reflects county match funds of $80,000, $32,659 collected in the 2021 county cleaning green rollback tax penalties, and a minimal contribution from Ferguson Township for two farms being preserved in 2022. Now, we have an unusual circumstance this year in that the minimal contribution of $1 by Ferguson to each farm was advised by our Pennsylvania Bureau of Farmland Preservation. It's a way to use as many of the encumbered 2020 funds as possible. This leaves the bulk of the funding for these two farms to the state. The reason for this is that the acreage on these farms is smaller than average, and unfortunately, no other top-ranked PACE applicant met requirements in time to meet our encumbering deadline. Fortunately, Ferguson will put a placeholder on those funds for next year, and the money that's not used by the Commonwealth will be redistributed next year. So, I ask for your support today for certification of funds.
Thank you very much, Diana.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. I do serve on the committee, and having been on that committee now a number of years, I know that you spend the entire year preparing and getting ready and getting all your i's dotted and t's crossed, and then it just always seems like there's a two, three, four-week period in generally the November, December timeframe where they're like, okay, pick your farms, let's go, move, move, move.
Yes.
So, glad to hear that yet again, we've been able to do that, and we're preserving the land of two farms. Are they both in Ferguson, then?
They're both in Ferguson. One is only a little under 20 acres, but it's contiguous to an already-preserved farm, so it qualified on those grounds.
Okay.
And, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No, just kind of amused at the $2 contribution.
I know.
See, if you need that match, we can probably handle that today, so...
Yeah, I think Ferguson is really happy to hear that as well. But they are going to put a placeholder on those committed funds. We're really glad that they were able to restore us to their budget this year.
Thank you very much for that, that explanation, Diana. Okay, we'll look for a motion then to that effect.
Motion to add the certification of appropriations for the 2022 Agricultural Land Preservation Program to next week's consent agenda.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. All right. And Ryan, we'll welcome you up at this time for a contract. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here to discuss entering into an additional contract with an electronic monitor service provider. Currently, we use BI, but this is another provider that we think will help with our supervision efforts. We do rely pretty heavily on electronic monitoring. It's a good tool for us supervision-wise to protect the county because we, instead of being incarcerated, we need to be in our place on EM. And I'm very familiar with this company from a few years of getting around. They're a great service, and the contract just breaks down what it would cost per day with the different monitors that we use in this company.
And as it's stated on the agenda, there isn't any cost directly to the county, it's literally passed on to the individual who's under...
Correct. The individual placed on electronic monitoring is the ones who pay for the service. This is just a contract indicating what the cost is per day.
Great.
The program saves the county a heck of a lot of money, not just for incarceration, but for human services, for the incarcerated person's family, and of course, it's better for society. There's quite the workforce shortage right now, and if somebody's available, at least help out at home, maybe that frees somebody else up to do some work.
All right, we thank you for this other option that we can afford, or we can offer to folks here, so look for a motion to add this to next week's consent agenda.
Motion to add the contract with VigilNet to next week's consent agenda.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Thank you, Ryan. Okay. All right, Faith, we're going to welcome you up for some items for adult services. Good morning.
Thanks for having me today. I have three contracts here for you. I'm going to start with the second one that is not necessarily ERAP-related. Our second contract is a renewal of service access and management to provide our department's financial management services. So, that's for a 12-month period of time for 2022 for $48,000. The other two contracts are ERAP-related. Again, it's the Emergency Rural Assistance Program. So, before I touch on them, since there are certainly some pretty big numbers, I'm going to give you a very brief update on kind of where we're at with our spending. So, as of our reporting to the state at the end of December of 2021, we've exceeded $5.7 million in both direct services and admin costs. So, to date, I would anticipate that we've exceeded $6 million. To date, we've also helped approximately 1,000 households in Center County, and we've had over 1,700 households apply to the... We've also been using ERAP to address a homeless crisis. As you may be aware, our homeless shelters have been at or beyond capacity for many months, and we've been sheltering close 45 to 55 households at any given time in a hotel. We've also been expediting appropriate and high-need cases, so of course, if someone comes to us and they have a need that is much greater, or there's a pending eviction or something to that nature, we will take a look at the situation and do what we can to get them processed as fast as possible. We also have a very high rate of recertifications, which means people that are returning for our continued assistance. We don't know which counties yet will be receiving additional funds through ERAP-1, but we did state two times, I think, to the state of Pennsylvania that if we continue on this trajectory of need, we will need $4 million more dollars in ERAP-1 to get us to September of 2022. We know that they have awarded additional money to 17 other counties. We don't know if we're one of them, and if we are, if we have received that amount. But we did not, we were not asked to return money, so that's a two thumbs up. I'll give the two instead of the one. So, kind of moving on then to our contracts, the first one is a new arrangement that we have with Interfaith Human Services. So, as you may be aware, they currently provide the Center County Fuel Bank, they have for many, many years, and we, of course, are seeing more people contact us with a heating crisis. So, because of the level of need that we're experiencing and the high rate of exodited cases that we're already trying to push through, we have made an arrangement with Interfaith that if somebody is experiencing a heating crisis, whether they come through our department or contact them directly, that ERAP is just another option for them to use. So, if someone is, again, like I'm at a quarter tank or below and it's freezing, they would work with their current vendor, provide the service, and that would be considered one month of assistance. And then from there, we have all those day-to-day behind-the-scenes logistics to make sure that they're not exceeding their 18-month cap and that sort of thing. But to us, it's one more way to kind of take some of that weight off of our department so that we can continue doing what we're doing, but also to recognize that Interfaith Human Services is the expert when it comes to heating. They've been doing it for a really long time, and so we want to maximize on that opportunity. So, this is, of course, the contract, and of course, we're in the process of training with that agency at this time. The last one is a contract renewal, excuse me, contract renewal of service access and management. So, this is a total of $7.9 million. This is our advance payment to them, since, of course, the program is so large, we can't expect our provider to have, you know, a million dollars a month on account. We're getting close to $8,000 to $9,000,000 in what we're spending. It's been a really good arrangement thus far. This is a 3% admin, which we think is really appropriate and in line with what we do with our other contracts where they provide what we call administrative assistance, where essentially they're cutting the checks or doing the direct deposits to different landlords and utility companies. $4.6 million of this is ERAP-1. That's the rest of our allocation, of our $10.6 million. It does not include the administrative costs that we need in our own department for staffing. And then it also includes $3.3 million of ERAP-2. That's the first allocation that we received that we're pushing over to SAM because we have started using ERAP-2 monies this month. And lastly, we did receive, of course, our second ERAP-2 allocation, and that's where we're going to be pulling our Interfaith funds from. So, all of the money that we spend through the Interfaith program is coming specifically from ERAP-2, just for the simplicity of the fact that we've already made a... 2, just for the simplicity of the fact that we've already made arrangements to send the rest of our ERAP 1 over to SAM. So that is where we are currently. And so certainly, if you have any questions, we'll have to answer them.
Okay, thanks, Faith.
Just a quick question on the $100,000 for Interfaith. Is that for admin or is that for actual heating oil?
Oh, sorry. Yes, I did write that down. I forgot. So thanks for saying that. We have a 10% admin agreement. So for every amount of money they spend, you, they can get 10% of admin on that total cost. So $90,000, $10,000.
I would think, just because we have, you know, we've received the funds through ERAP 1, ERAP 2, we have enough that if we would need more, I think it would be, you know, if it turns out that you need 120 or 200,000 in heating costs through, you know, through that that program, I think that we could do it, right? So this isn't necessarily, you're not capping it. It's just at this time, that's what the contract is.
Right. So the contract is currently for four months. It's January to April, which I also forgot to mention. I'm not used to the four month contract, just to cover that winter month. But you know, here in Center County, of course, winter can sometimes dip into May. And yes, if we do see that there is a need beyond 100,000, then we will advance additional funds to them. And we do have the funding in ERAP 2 to cover that. The challenge will just be kind of working together to make sure that people aren't, you know, they haven't already exhausted their benefits. Because with ERAP 2, it's 18 months total, and it's 18 months no matter what. It's not 18 months of one utility and 18 months of another and 18 months of rent. For some people, we've paid 12, 13, 14 months off of electric, and then we only have the remaining amount to help with other things. So that can be really trying and tough for people. But again, the point is to get them wherever they need to be to be safe and housed.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I just hope that May is sunshiny and beautiful.
Correct. I agree with you. I do not want to sign this contract, but we will, we have to.
All right. Thank you, Faith. We're going to look for then for a motion to add to next week's consent agenda.
Motion to add adult services, items 1 through 3 to next week's consent agenda.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Yeah, please, Gary. Yeah.
The backup plan, when you say homeless shelters are at near capacity or at capacity, what do you, there are general programming you have or someplace else?
Yeah. So this is definitely something that other counties have been experiencing too. And we can, we can honestly say that we've been seeking guidance wherever we can. We are definitely seeing an increase in people that are struggling to either secure housing because of costs or availability. We're finding a lot of people, especially with the cold weather, that have been maybe living in an inhabitable RV, a tent on family property, family relationships crumbling. And what I try to say, for better or for worse, in my office, is when you have the money and you have the service, you're going to see the need, and the need's been there. Now, it's been exacerbated by the pandemic, but obviously now we can really kind of put more, more numbers to it. So what we're doing kind of behind the scenes in our department at this time is trying to reach out to our already maxed out providers. And I say that with a lot of appreciation for them because we are all pretty maxed out, trying to find ways to provide additional case management to the people that are in these situations. So we're not required and we're not permitted, we're not required to provide necessarily case management through ERAP, and we're not permitted to create that as a barrier. But we do know that people are in need, and if we can provide additional services to them, we hope we can help them kind of move out. We also try to talk to people about when you're hotel, it's up to the hotel owner and the hotel company as to whether or not you stay. So March is going to be basketball season. It doesn't necessarily mean they're going to extend their time with us regardless of what we pay. You know, so this is not a forever, it can't be a forever situation. But we've gotten hit with it pretty hard, and we're just trying to take it kind of day by day. So that's where we're at.
Eviction rate increased here in Center County pandemic related or not?
I cannot say with a lot of confidence, but what I can tell you is that the tsunami we expected did not happen. We do expedite as needed. We have not gotten any sort of call or case sent to us from the magistrate's office. It's been really quiet. It's been the homelessness. It has been the tsunami. And, you know, again, what I kind of articulate internally to my staff and sometimes even to myself is we're in the need. We don't even know what the need is yet. And that's kind of one of the hardest places to be when you work in human services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
All right. So we'll call the question then. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you again, Faith.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll welcome up Natalie. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm going to turn this up a little bit. Sorry. So before you, I have, on behalf of the Children and Youth Department, their Act 148 First Quarter Fiscal Year Report. So this is for July 1 through September 30. And for note, we have spent $3,74,202, which hits us at 24.37%, which is right on target for a quarterly allocation from the state. So that's where we're trending.
Thank you, Natalie. Any questions, comments?
No, clear.
Look for a motion then.
Motion to approve the Act 148 First Quarter Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Report.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion is carried.
And so the second one is our letter of agreement with Community Rising Therapy LLC, specific to speech pathology and IFSP teaming. Contract total is for $12,000. It will go back to July 1 through June 30 of 2022. Came through through Ockdale and a request for a provider. And so we are going to add them to our provider due to that request. And so we have a certain amount of allocation that we believe we should be right on target with based on the current number of referrals that we've been getting for that service. And so if any adjustments occur, you might see me in a couple more months if the need kind of really increases.
Natalie, where are they located out of?
I actually don't have that. I was going to check that before I walked in the door. Commissioner Dershowitz, I apologize for that. I just, I usually have their whole contract, but it's a letter of agreements. It's a little bit shorter, so I didn't have that.
Yeah, they didn't sound familiar to me.
Yeah, they're new, they're relatively new to us as well. So it was a, you know, it was a state approved provider that's coming in through to us. So it's a little bit different than our typical.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Sure, yeah.
Any other questions, comments? We'll look for a motion.
Motion to add the letter of agreement with Community Rising Therapy LLC to next week's consent agenda.
Then seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
We will look for a motion then to approve our consent agenda.
Motion to approve this week's consent agenda.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of approving this, say by saying aye. Aye. Motion is carried. Okay. Anne, good morning. We'll welcome you up.
Hi.
It's good to have you back again.
Thank you.
Sure. Good morning.
Today I have a fee for local use report for you, as well as some items for your consideration for future actions. The big thing is the Fee for Local Use Ordinance 2 of 17 sunsets May 9 of this year. PENDOT has indicated they require a 90 day written notification on the ordinance status. And that means the action has to be taken on or before February 8. So they know what to do essentially with collection of fees. That's the primary reason they make this request, so they can inform their staff. Just wanted to go over a couple things. The benefits of fee for local use. All the funds collected come back to the county. Municipalities are not required to provide a match. They, these funds pay for material costs to improve the county transportation network. They can be used to fill in funding gaps for projects when projects come up short. And they've also been used for match for grants such as the PENDOT multimodal grant program. Just wanted, you've seen this slide before, but this talks about the leveraging of the funds and how our funds have basically expanded in terms of providing support to our municipalities. Here's a map you've also seen before. Roughly 14 road projects have been completed. I hear people like football, so 86 football fields and length of roadwork. Some of that's roads, some of it's guide rails, some of it's drainage. So it's a mixed bag about exactly what it is. And a lot of people may not even notice what the work was, but it is very important. And then 11 bridges. These are some smaller bridges for us, but they provide critical connections for our residents. So even though the ADT is a very conservative number, it is also providing good connections for our county residents.
So, and I, I know, if you go back down the side, I know we've got the little blue dot there for Howard.
Yes.
As I remember, there's a very small street where there's only one bridge.
Yes.
It was the only way into the neighborhood. There were multiple houses. There was a boat launch. I think there was a small business.
Yes.
Without that bridge, those houses are worth nothing. The small business fails, and we have reduced citizen access to a major and wonderful state park. So to try to put a story behind one of these 14 projects, we basically saved the neighborhood.
So I do have a couple before and after photos for you. A lot of these projects are still under design because of the nature of the work. So while these may seem kind of minor projects, they are significant to the municipalities. This is a project in Marion Township, Waits Lane, before and after. This was actually part of a larger project for two pipes at similar intersection locations. And this, but this had the more dramatic picture, so that's why I picked it. And on the right, that's what it looks like today. And then College Township, their Brush Valley Road Bridge was done this past summer as well. And on a typical day, if you hadn't paid much attention on the left, that's what it would look like. On the right, you can see kind of approaching the finished product there with the new surface. There was a lot of layers that had to be peeled back for this particular bridge, so that's not exactly obvious to the general user. But they also improved drainage adjacent to the bridge.
This is the one right over Spring Creek.
Yes.
Being close to the bike.
Yes.
So yeah, if that bridge goes out, people just up the street there have about a two to three mile detour.
Yes.
Just to get back to their names.
Couple of things to think about when we look at fee for local use in terms of job creation and retention. This is not me saying this. This is other sources. I'm not an expert in this, but I had help from other staff in the planning office in terms of what is help, what this does to help the county. So the estimate is $1 million in transportation infrastructure investment. It retains 11 or creates jobs. And then $1 million in transportation infrastructure investment retains roughly 20 jobs. So finally, the $1 million in infrastructure investment is a $3 increase estimated in the gross domestic product based on the experts in my office. Just kind of a highlight here, the past, these past funded projects have provided a variety of benefit. And some of these projects have done more than one thing. But just to highlight, Stormwater, as you saw in Marion Township, also has helped with miles, roadway improvements to accommodate the Amish and Greg, Miles and Milheim Borough, bridge and road repairs for school bus and emergency access, which quite a few of these projects, when you look through the applications, these, these concerns are mentioned for for school bus and emergency vehicle access. And then improved access to recreation for local residents and visitors, such as the College Township Bridge. That is adjacent to one of the PEA bicycle routes. And looking ahead, if we were to go with our June allocation, this is staff's recommendation for what we could do for June for fee for local use funds. These are projects that were submitted last year as part of the liquid fuels program. And I was able to check with almost all of them, the exception of two, that they are still in need of these funds in order to move forward with their projects. So it would be something the commissioners could also consider as part of their, your discussion today. So Bellefonte Borough, Curtin Township, Greg Township, Milheim Borough, Rush Township, and Snowshoe Borough.
So, and I hope. I get through the Snowshoe Borough potential project on West Sunset. The two-ratering roadway is a very mild wave putting what's happening there. It's called a road, but it's approaching the point where you pretty much need a four-wheel drive vehicle to use it. So I definitely have experienced that one. And obviously, everybody is probably hanging out in Bellefonte Borough right now. And Spring and Bishop, definitely better sightlines, better sidewalks would be appreciated.
All right. Thank you. Just a couple of projects, sample projects in that list. Bellefonte Borough, you can see hopefully sort of there, the project area, Bishop and Spring. That is kind of a little bit of a chaotic area for pedestrians. There is no clear path for them, as well as at points in time for vehicles. So they've spent a lot of time trying to figure out how to make it better. They're also planning on using CDBG money for that particular area.
So that's right at the Dollar General and Bell Market and the major, one of the two largest parking areas for towns.
And then the other sample project, just, or actually two, were Greg Township and Milheim Borough. And they're kind of smaller in the sense that you won't necessarily notice them as a general user, but they have some sign problems that they need to install. In one case, install signs, and the other case just makes the signs better. So these, these are the type of projects that municipalities are, are asking us. I do have to mention, and I'm going to go back to the table because I forgot, is Milheim also asked for an equipment contribution. They have a piece of equipment right now that is almost useless. And so now they are downsizing with a Kubota, with a boom mower and front end loader. So that's also part of their application, just so you know. All right. So the requested actions in order to kind of keep on schedule is a decision on continuation of Fee for Local Use Ordinance 2 of 17. And if approved, approve the 2022 Fee for Local Use projects. Those are the two items, kind of in that order, obviously, that we are looking for some information.
Okay, thank you so much, Anne. So we appreciated the fact that we have a timeline to notify PENDOT of the potential sunset for the $5 fee, Fee for Local Use. So we wanted to just give a little bit of a presentation, look back on how the funds have been used. So you've really done that today well. And then we wanted to also just know that there is a, there's, you know, the clock is ticking. We've got a few more meetings before we would approach that Feb 8 deadline. So just to double check, we could potentially take final action on February 8. It looks like you checked into that, and that is the case?
Yes. Matt, can that be our municipal services context? So that would be okay.
Okay, great. So that essentially leaves us three meetings, the 25th of January, February 1st and 8th. And we're also working through our solicitor in PENDOT to determine whether or not we would need to do another ordinance, just a resolution. But regardless, we do have three meetings still to consider that. If we would need to have an ordinance, we would need to publish it for 10 days. It essentially needs two meetings in between. So if we would potentially take action on the 25th, we could then consider final approval on the 8th. So just in terms of the timeline on that. But if we could do it via resolution, we could just do one meeting and have it done by the 1st, if that's the case we go in. So one of the things that I, as we approached this decision is, if you wouldn't mind going back to those six projects, Anne, yeah, I thought it was important because when we had considered this five years ago, yeah, five years ago in 2017, we didn't really have any projects to talk about with the $5 fee. It was just sort of in theory. And so one of the suggestions I'm going to make is that when we take action on potentially extending it, we actually combine that with the action of these six projects there. And I think what that'll let people know is if we can, if we're going to continue with the $5 fee in any capacity, we want to let folks know, here's what's also going to be funded by it and through it. I think that would be a really meaningful way to do this. And again, I think, you know, all these municipalities are still asking for money. We're seeing a reduction in the liquid fuels and the Act 13 bridge money. So I think it makes sense for us to consider this and continue with the process of getting the extension continued. I will say as well is, a little bit unknown about what the infrastructure bill that just passed out of Washington a few weeks ago, what that contains in terms of any competitive grants and projects through that. And I think that as we see more money coming into Pennsylvania for that, we just got a note of how much Pennsylvania is going to be getting through that bill. And it could potentially be a lot of money for our area. And if we could use any of this money for leveraging, as we've done in previous ones, use any of this money for leveraging, as we've done in previous ones, that might be, that might be helpful. So just my thoughts on that. But I think that it does make sense for us to continue on with this. And again, we know that there's projects that we can fund with it, and would love to see these six projects receive funding this year. So I'll leave it there and for future other discussion at this time.
Well, the landscape's changed a little bit. I know the state of Pennsylvania is currently sitting on $5.5 billion of cash. Commissioner Pipe's point, that doesn't count the additional money that's coming to Pennsylvania from the infrastructure bill, which is going to be additional billions of dollars. And that all sounds wonderful, but the issue is to fix our local roads and our local bridges, we have to come up with what's called local match money. And as Ann detailed at the prior meeting, some of the other traditional funding sources for that, Act 13, liquid fuels taxes, are flat at best, and many of our municipalities are financially stressed at this point. So to tell them, hey, great, great news. The state of Pennsylvania has several million dollars of additional funding to fix local roads in Center County. You need to come up with an extra half million or million dollars to make that happen. That's going to be very difficult. And this particular fee structure, which was approved by the state legislature about six years ago, does allow the commissioners to assist our local municipalities. And then, as you mentioned, if you do spend a million dollars on road construction, it's a little up in the air as to exactly how many jobs are retained or created, but it's measurable. And I do also, we didn't know when we first approved this, but it is, I think, a very positive sign that for every dollar of local fee for use we've spent on local projects, it's pulled down over $3 of state, federal, and local money to keep our roads and bridges in good shape. And I believe, yet in part because of this fee, I think when I became commissioner, we had 13, I'll use the old term because it's more dramatic, structurally deficient bridges in Center County. I think in the meantime, we added two more because things wear out, especially in the winter when you put all the salt on everything. But I think we're down to five or six of the now 15 bridges that aren't at least in the planning stages or engineering or have already been fixed. So I'm definitely interested in talking about the fee for local use.
Thank you, Commissioner.
First of all, I want to commend you and your, and your office and the raise here with us today for working through, I think, a pretty, you get a lot of requests, and to make all those requests, you know, sort of fit into the different boxes and making sure that everything is attended to. And I, and I will echo my fellow commissioners' concern for some of our particularly less affluent communities that have to address some of the infrastructure issues with transportation. And this is an opportunity for us to look at those and kind of decipher which ones are priorities, and whether it's a bridge or a road or a streetscape, I think they all lead value to our communities. I just want to say thank you for being able to kind of work through all that maze of requests and make, you know, I think you brought some pretty good ones to us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll continue the conversation in the future weeks. And again, either on the 25th or the 1st, I'll be looking at introducing either a resolution or ordinance to continue the conversation and go from here. But again, by the 8th, we will need to have a word depend on. So we appreciate, again, the presentation today. Gary?
Thanks for the presentation. Very nice.
Yeah, thank you. Gary, anything for Ann? Okay, thank you, Ann, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, over to Commissioner Higgins for the check run.
Sure. Smaller-than-average check run of $910,842.82. Working off the theme of agricultural preservation, we have three checks totaling $2,626.89 to Gallagher Dairy Company out of the Johnstown area. For our dairy farmers, thankfully, the price of milk has stabilized, around $20 for every 100 pounds, which is how milk is sold at wholesale. But that's still, for most farmers, is not what it costs to produce 100 pounds of milk. So definitely want to raise that to our, to our citizens, that farming is still a very difficult and not very profitable industry at this point. But would like to make the motion to approve the check run dated January 14.
Seconded. Then seconded to approve our check run. Any final discussion on that check run? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anything to approve?
No, I don't have a question.
Okay, thank you. All right. And a voter registration, Commissioner Dershowitz.
We do have one today.
Okay.
And there are 105,232 registered voters in Center County as of this morning. That's up, or actually, it's down four voters from last report. There are 44,155 Democratic registrants, 147 Green Parties, 670 Libertarian, 14,178 No Affiliation, and then 42,212 Republicans. And that leaves 3,870 other voters in our county as of this morning. Of those 3,870 other voters, I'd like to highlight the open party. The open party has one registered voter in its ranks. So welcome to the ranks of the small parties with one. So, all right, we have, the feature precinct report this morning is Precinct Number 52, which is Ferguson Township, West Ward 1, votes at Fairbrook United Methodist Church on West Whitehall Road. We want to thank them for the opportunity to cooperate with us and making sure that the citizens of that township have a good place to vote. And it's been a great partnership for a long time. Of the, in the last election, there were a total registration of 1,262 in Precinct 52, and ballots cast is 745, which leads to a percentage voter turnout of 59.03%. Yeah, nice turnout. And the folks that make it happen in Precinct Number 52, the judge of elections is Connie Moore, the minority inspector is David Dalbin, the majority inspector is Jane Brown, and then the clerks are Sharon Byers and W. Clifford Born. And again, we want to thank the Fairbrook United Methodist Church for helping us out, and we'll be seeing you probably about May 17.
What our approach is on this, why we're doing it, and again, we'll work through any challenges that might come up. If there are any questions, we're certainly going to answer employees to let them, let them know where our heads are at on this one. So, yeah. So, but again, we're proceeding on and starting it in about two weeks.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Gary, as always. Look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, 11 o'clock.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you all.